All right. Let's call the meeting to order here. Warminster Township Board of Supervisors, Thursday, December 16th, 2021. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be made standing for a moment of silence for all our brave servicemen and women and civilians working overseas. Thank you. All right. So we'll start with announcements. I just have one announcement tonight, and that was we had executive session to go over personnel issues and some other legal matters.
Labor and litigation.
Labor and litigation. Thank you. That's all I have. Kathy?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I have a couple announcements for the library board. Upcoming event is a seasonal mocktail. Learn how to make non-alcoholic mixology on Tuesday, December 21st at 7:00 PM. They show you how to do all kinds of flavorful and sophisticated non-alcoholic drinks. I think I might get some tips and then add something to mine. Winter Storytime is weekly every Tuesday, beginning January 11th at 10:30 at the library. Register for any library programs by contacting the library. The library is contacting, I'm sorry, collecting hats, scarves, and socks, donations for feast through December 18th. The library will return to regular weekday hours beginning Monday, January 3rd. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And Ms. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple brief announcements. I want to thank our friends from Warmminster Gratitude. They're the folks that sell the support Warmminster Police signs and the shirts for canines. They had a real nice event last Saturday at the VFW. It was their first time out, and they had a good turnout. It was an open house to the public. They had Santa Claus, some presents, some refreshments, and it was pretty well attended. So I want to thank them, and I hope they continue to do the good work that they're doing. And I just want to welcome Mr. Scott, our new township manager, to the panel. Welcome. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mary?
Good evening, everyone. The Parks and Rec announcements, dog licenses in Bark Park, 2022 annual dog licenses are for sale at Parks and Rec from 9:00 to 4:00, Monday to Friday. Pennsylvania law requires that all dogs over the age of three months must be licensed and have a rabies vaccination. Last minute holiday gifts, Parks and Rec hoodies, sweatshirts, t-shirts available for sale at Parks and Rec office, Monday to Friday, 9:00 to 4:00. Discount Regal movie tickets are also available for $9.50 each. Purchase them by December 22nd. Park winterization, all park buildings, restrooms, and water fountains have been shut down for the season. Porter potties are available at Kemper and Warmminster Community Park year-round. Christmas tree recycling, don't forget to recycle your Christmas tree at Warmminster Community Park. Evergreens will be accepted from December 26th to January 31st. Parks and Rec is busy planning 2022 community events. Anyone interested in sponsorship should contact Parks and Rec office at (215) 443-5428. And the Parks and Rec office will be closed from December 23rd through January 2nd. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mary. And finally, Judy, please.
Just one. That's the Bed Wilson Community Center for Seniors is open full-time now and back to its regular schedule. So be sure and check their website and check all the activities that they have. It's a fun place to go.
Thank you. All righty. No presentations tonight, I don't believe. Land use matters. I don't believe we have anything on the land use. Is that correct, Craig?
Correct. You did have, I think our old agenda was the lot 15 of our street road industrial park. We worked it out with the engineer. He notified Mr. Wiener a few days ago. They withdrew their application for tonight. They're going to revise their plans. You'll see them at your January 20th meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Cleaner set of plans.
Okay. Excellent. All right. So we'll move right into public comment. Bobby, come on up.
Thank you very much. That way I can go home.
We have good news, too, right?
I do.
Excellent.
I do. Good afternoon or evening. I'm Bobby Loftus, Warmminster tax collector. As of today, we only have 95 people left to pay their township bill.
Yes.
Now, I sent over 10,400 bills. So that means over 10,300 people have paid.
Wow.
That's phenomenal. And we still have two weeks. From tomorrow on, there will be no personal checks permitted from now till the end of the year. If you come in to pay your taxes, it has to be a bank check, a cashier's check, a certified check, money order, or cash. If you bring in cash, you must bring in the exact amount because as soon as you leave, it goes to the bank. I do not keep cash in my office, so I can't make change. I also want to remind the seniors, if, they only have till December 30th to apply for their senior discount on their trash. You have to live in the house, and I have to bill you for trash. So it's not condos. It's a trash discount. It's not a tax discount. And I also want to, and this is going to sound really stupid, with over 10,400 parcels, if you get something from me, it's not junk mail. I don't send out information. I only send out bills and important letters. I've recently had the problem of sending out some letters, and one man called me and he said to me, "Yeah, I was telling my neighbor, I'm getting a lot of mail from you." And he said, "I'm not getting any." And my wife said, "What kind of mail are you getting?" And he said, "You better call her. This is important." And his taxes weren't paid. They assume anything they get from me is a tax bill, and their mortgage company pays it. It doesn't always work that way, especially with the refinances this year. So if you get a letter or a phone call from me, don't ignore it. It's not junk.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
All right. Well, that's great. Great news. I mean, that's fantastic. And thank every, all the property owners for their...
I mean, they're really paying well this year.
Yeah, that's great. Good to hear.
They really are.
Bobby, anybody in the room on that delinquent list? We can get the chief to escort them over to your office tomorrow morning.
I can't answer that. That's confidential. Okay?
So, yeah, so maybe we'll, if we could put it on the website or our webpage, that from here till December 30th, correct? Because you're closing on the 31st?
No, of course not.
Right.
I'll be open. But I mean, they have to, if they go for the rebate, it has to be by the 30th.
Right.
I will be open on the 31st, but the banks are closing early.
Right.
So I put all my bills, and I'm only open till 1:00.
Okay.
Because the banks are closing at 2:00.
Right.
So I have to process it and get it to the bank.
Okay.
But then the week after, I will be open after Christmas. Yeah, or that week, yeah.
Okay.
For Christmas, I am taking off Christmas Eve.
Don't blame it.
Because it's a Friday.
Right.
But other than that, I will be open for them to take, pay their bills.
Okay. So John, maybe we can get that posted for anyone? Or, I'll lead it with our new manager, Tom.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, and have nice holidays. Happy New Year.
Thanks, Bobby. Good job.
Anyone else?
I would like to say something.
Come on up to the podium. Is this on something we're voting on, or is this...
This is something for the public, something I'm very passionate about, so...
Well, first, can you please state your name and address, please?
Of course. My name is Michael, 903 Auto Lane, Warmminster.
Last name, Mike?
Viewries.
Okay.
I was born and raised in this township. So I came up here the other day, and I spoke to a police officer, and he told me probably to come to this meeting. So something that really bothers me is the fact that there's people homeless. And I know we look past it a lot, and you know, I think we take a lot of things for granted in life, you know, like, you know, just taking it simple, getting a water bottle out of the refrigerator, you know, I just got a slice of pizza after, you know, work today, and like, something like that, you know, we, we're so, it's so normal to us that we look past it. And, you know, I know everybody's situation is different, but, you know, we're all humans. And, you know, I believe you treat everybody the way you want to be treated. And, you know, people make decisions. I don't even like to call them good or bad decisions. They're decisions, you know, they make us into who we are. And I just think we treat, you know, we need to be kinder to one another and forgive and understand. And, you know, I believe, you know, we really can make a difference in not only our community, but in this world. And, you know, I think we need to step up as leaders and, you know, stand up for what's right and wrong. And, you know, we don't realize the impact we have on other people, you know? And so I don't know really what I'm asking for. I mean, I would like, like, permission to, like, you know, maybe, I know it needs to be discussed, but I want to, like, just build something for them. It doesn't have to be like a huge building, but like, even if it's just something like, like, the size of a shed, you know, I know there's guys living behind the 7-Eleven over here in Warmminster, and they're like, they're living under a tarp, you know what I mean? Like, not even, they're literally living with nothing. And, like, I'll come out of my own pocket with it. I mean, I can come up with, like, signatures, over 1,000 signatures, whatever it takes, like, I will do whatever I have to do in order to make it happen. I just, you know, obviously, I need permission from the township. And it's something that I'm really passionate about, and I really believe that everybody, you know, I'm not asking for a decision right now, but I just ask that everybody, you know, prays on it and just thinks about it because, you know, something that I really want to do, and I want to make a difference in my community, so...
A couple things, Mr. Chairman. I think this is something that probably should go to the county level.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
But for you in particular, though, there's, in Warmminster Township, there's so many volunteer opportunities. You have the Park and Rec Board that handles all the parks and outdoor space, and like, the Warmminster Rotary Club would love to have you. And the Warmminster Rotary Club works with local people that you're discussing right now.
Is there any way you could get me, like, information on that?
Absolutely.
Like I said, I wasn't really sure what to do, but I know if I never speak up, it's not going to get done, you know, so...
They would love to have you as a member.
Like I said, I will come up with the funds myself, you know? I just want, even if it's just a small building, just with insulation, so, you know, and, you know, I'll help them out any way I can with food or water, but just to keep them out of the cold, you know?
And now Pat Boyle can hook you up with food bank information, right? She...
There's opportunity in this township for you to do what you want to do.
Yeah, and Judy and Mark bring up good, valid points. As far as building structures, I would have to defer you to our township manager and staff at the...
Is that something we can, you know, possibly think about, though, or discuss in the, you know, in the near future about, you know, what we have to do in order to come up with a decision for that?
Yeah, I would think that you'd have to talk to the manager and the staff, and L and I, and there's all kinds of paperwork and ordinances you need to...
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to, you know, get it started, so...
It's a very noble cause, what you're saying, and I've worked with Pat Boyle for the food bank in Warmminster. We have a great one at McDonald's School that we do on a regular basis. As far as the homeless, like Mark and Judy both pointed out, the county takes care of all social services. So if you look at the township, we govern, and the county, they provide all the social services, so that's who you would need to contact up at the county.
Okay.
I could give you my card, and I could type, put you in the right direction.
Yeah, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay?
All right. Thank you so much.
Great. Thanks for stepping up. Have a great holiday.
Me, too. I'll stay around for a little longer.
Sure. It's good entertainment.
All right. Anyone else? No? All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Eric said, "We'll consider approval of the Board of Supervisors' minutes dated November 18th, 2021. Consider Cobblestone Estates, the former Leary redevelopment, release number three from the escrow account in the amount of $47,425." Excuse me. Consider 625 Mary Street, release number four from the escrow account in the amount of $14,986.70. 90 York Road, release number two, final from the escrow account in the amount of $28,779.75. And 1270 Mearns Road, release 11 from the escrow account in the amount of $276,610.65. Consider approval of the opioid litigation settlement agreements for distributors and Janson entities. Consider authorization to execute the intergovernmental municipal police agreement. And consider approval of the Bucks County Open Space Program Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, can I, can we pull item F for a quick explanation from the solicitor, being that we have discussed it?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We'll leave that to Brandon.
It's my pleasure. Thank you, Supervisor McKee and Chairman. Supervisors and residents, the, you've all read about the opioid, and you've all experienced the opioid crisis. Many of you have been, we've all been actually to those funerals and know people in our community who are addicted and/or whatever, or unfortunately passed away. Too many. A number of years ago, many of the law firms got together that involved class action, and they solicited all the municipal solicitors and governmental solicitors. We got together and we teamed up, and they formed a consortium of law firms to go after the opioid manufacturers and distributors. The testimony, if you've read some of the testimony, you're privy to read some of it, it is, I don't know, I guess the word is shocking, appalling, horrible. If you or I did half the things that these companies have been alleged and to have done, we would be in jail for a very, very long time. But I guess it's good to be really super rich and be worth billions of dollars and be above that to some extent. There's a, there was a couple of settlements. This one is for the Janson entities, which is J&amp;J, Johnson &amp; Johnson, and some of the distributors. There are other settlements that are also taking place. This is the first big one. Warmminster Township will receive an estimated $268,000. And that number's not carved in stone. It could go down a little bit, it could be up, it's, but it's, it'll be somewhere around a quarter of a million dollars this first round with these defendants. And other municipalities, based on, pretty much on population and other things, will get it. The county of Bucks, for example, I have, I mean, I'm not, county of Bucks, for example, is going to get over $5 million. The district attorney's office is going to get a couple of million, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That does not mean the county could also give money to the various municipalities. I'm not saying they will. There's, there may be some restrictions on it. We don't have all the details yet because it's still being negotiated. But I don't have to remind you that money is fungible, and so if you get the money and you spend it in one area, it frees that money up that you might have had for other things. So it's, it's a very, it's, I highly recommend this. I'm glad it came to this. Everybody thought it would never happen. I had faith that it would, especially after tobacco litigation, which I thought was crazy at the time. I was wrong. It worked. And so this is, hopefully, and hopefully more importantly, we'll get the money, but hopefully more importantly, these companies will change and have changed and will change the way they do business. And it'll be tougher to get these kinds of prescriptions. It will be tougher for doctors. Doctors will think twice before writing these prescriptions for every little thing. And so that's, unless there's other questions, the township does not pay any fees from this. The attorneys involved, these, the corp, the big giant corp, corporations, big attorney firms will separately petition for court fees, which will be paid as well. And that's the story for now. We may be back, hopefully we'll be back sometime in the future with other settlements for this board to approve.
You know, the reason I asked you to discuss this was there was a woman before this board several years ago who had two sons that were in high school, a year apart, and both OD'd over off of Ivy Land Road, and one of them didn't make it. And this doesn't, by no means brings her sons back, but this is a step forward towards making things right with someone like her in her own community.
Right. And hopefully make it a little less easy to access these types of narcotics. Okay. Is there any other questions on any of the other consent agenda? Well, we actually, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda? All right, being done, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All opposed? I didn't think so. Five oh carries. Thank you. All right, finance report. We'll hand that over to Mary.
The approval of the supplemental bill listed November 30th, 2021, in the amount And the bill listed December 16th, 2021, in the amount of $1,1,696.38, for a total of
Okay. A motion to approve the bill lists.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? All right, being done, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. All right, moving along. John, for the October financial statement?
Yes. Okay, so we're going to take a look at the general fund. Again, it's pretty much good news. There may be some numbers shock throughout the, some of what we're going to talk about. Revenues, there's, they continue to be above last year. We have a 5% increase, about $816,000 above last year. That's really still led by the transfer tax. We're up to $590,000 over last year. We did have some just very large sales that contributed to that. The real estate taxes, I think because of Bobby's being able to collect them as fast as she is, they're up $28,000, too. Earned income, that's up $237,000. So there's a lot of things contributing to it, which is good because it's not just all in one basket, leading to higher revenues. Expenses, this is where there might be a little sticker shock. Expenses are actually up $2,273,000. This is what we've been talking about the last couple of months because of the MMO. The MMO alone was up 200, or 2.9 million compared to the prior year. So what I did was I took both MMO amounts out of both years so we could look at apples to apples, and besides that, all their expenses are down 604,000. So we have a decrease of 5%. So overall, it's a net 10% to the good with the decrease in expenses. Some of the contributing to that, the main one is Public Works. They're down mainly because they're not building, we didn't have to pay for paving for the Water Sewer Authority. That's all coming out of capital and not the general fund this year. So that was the big one on that. So instead of talking about another fund, since we're getting close to year-end, I want to just review what my staff does to prepare these financial statements for you guys. A lot goes into it, so I literally have a checklist here of what we do every single month. So just running through it, the first thing we do, we actually print out reports from both Keystone and Berchheimer for some of the taxes that come in, make sure they're posted to the right accounts. Real estate taxes, when Bobby gives us a check, we post everything to the general fund. So that, once we get the final month-end report, then we allocate it to all the proper funds because we do have millages for Park and Rack and Library. For the GO fund, we get inventory numbers. So what you're looking at is the actual inventory count, so we know that's all correct. Then we finally reconcile the bank statements. So you do not see anything that does not have reconciled bank statements, and I guarantee you never will. That's one of my biggest things. Usually by the second of the month, I want those bank recs done. I agree out the AR and AP to their subsidiary ledger, so we have the detail that makes up those numbers that you would see in the financials. ESCRs, that's another big thing. When I started, they, we have two different systems, and they weren't being reconciled together. So the one thing I do is I take what bills we pay, put that into our billing system, which is a separate, outside of our financial software, send out the bills, get the fees, and put them back into our financial software, and then along with all the other transfers because we do pay all our expenses out of the general fund checking account. So there's other funds, just as we deposit everything in the general, expenses need to be reimbursed to the general when we have a parking rack or a library expense. So we're actually doing this on a monthly basis, reconciling everything so that all the funds that you're seeing are exactly where they should be. It's not, oh, this fund is that one. There's always going to be a delay. There's always going to be a due-to, due-from, but it's only a one-month delay at this point as opposed to this leading up to, when I started, I think I did over a $1 million transfer from ESCRs. I think right now it's down to about $55,000 that's due from the ESCRs to the general, and that's just because of the timing delay. So I just want to reassure you guys that what you're looking at is accurate. That's definitely my biggest goal, is to make sure you guys are seeing the proper numbers at all times.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
That's very refreshing.
So let me, let's reiterate this because we're still going down the avenue that we promised, is that we promised to reduce our expenditures.
Yep.
And we're continuing on that path, and it's showing on the ledgers now.
Yep.
That's great.
And like I said, if you take out those MMOs, expenses are down over half a million dollars.
Right. Right. And our MMOs are going to go down significantly next year, I believe.
Yes.
Right. That's great. And another thing, your office is doing a great job because I look at these things every month, along with everything else you do. And it's nice to have reconciled books every month, considering that we were a year and a half behind when we took over.
Yes.
So it's, you guys are doing a great job, and I thank you, you and your staff.
And what it's going to, this is going to lead to is, my goal is to have the audit done months before it was done. We had the 2020 audit done by June 30th. I want to cut that in half. My goal is by the end of March, have audited financial statements so that as we're doing the budget, we have good year-end numbers to start the budgeting from, using the fund balances from those audited numbers.
Now, there's a novel idea.
Yeah.
Thank you, because it's tough to make hard decisions, or decisions at all, when you don't know if what you're reading is actually the number.
Yes.
And you guys are doing a good job now. We appreciate that. Makes our job a little easier.
Yes. You could sleep at night.
Yeah, thank you. Because I didn't sleep for the first year.
Okay. Any questions on the news?
No. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Have a great holiday.
Merry Christmas.
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to go over the things that John had just did because they're so important and show you on the first page of the financial statements where some of those numbers are.
Sure.
If you were to look at page one, you'll see, page one of the financial statements. So it'll be right after the bill list.
One more? One more? No, you have to go through that whole list.
Looks like this. I'll just, I'll just enumerate it. On that sheet, this, this sheet right here, these two pages are the most important pages, I feel, in the financial statements. It's your balance sheet. So what John was mentioning was on the legal and engineering escrow, the amount that he was talking about is all the way down there at the bottom, it's 01, 130, 920, due from legal and engineering. He was close to 65,000, but 65,000 is very good, because it used to be a million. And what that means is, when that goes down, that's a due from the legal and engineering escrow fund. When that was a million and now went down to 65, it goes to the top number, cash. So that cash balance that's at the top would be that much less if his team wasn't getting those reconciliations done on a regular basis. That's huge, that's working, that's your money. The second one is our team here is doing a fantastic job, the golf course has done extremely well. We got a great management team over there. If you were to go up a few line items, you'll see 01, 130, 150, and that's due from the golf fund of 167. That's the normal amount you'd have in there from a regular monthly basis. For 20 years, that was $2 million.
Yes, we know.
These guys do a fantastic job over there driving rounds, and Marley with the catering. That number's now 167. That goes to the top line as well. So these are big, big, big issues. We're always gonna be behind on legal and engineering ESCRs, because we never know what type of activity is there, and the reconciliation process takes two months, two to three months. So you will see, if you were to look at these individually, it's a whole page in legal and engineering, you will see some negative numbers, because when the bills come in from the consultants, we have to bill that out, so it's gonna be negative until we receive the money back. So we work with the consultants, but it's usually two to three months out, we get everything, and John's, you know, that's the normal time, so I just wanted to make mention of that. We've always been talking that operations is our challenge. We have money for capital, operations is something that we have to really think about. So we're gonna have money for capital, because we've got some funds coming in from the federal government, and John has put that, if you look at your, the top line, third line down, you'll see American Rescue Plan money of 1,692. If you go down to the liability section, you'll see the exact same number. We haven't spent that money yet. As you spend it, you'll recognize the revenue. There's an infrastructure committee that was created. That committee will meet with John, township manager, and you guys will decide how to spend that money. It's restricted, you can only spend it on certain things. And as you do, you have a certain number of years too, it doesn't need to all be spent at once, you have time. So I just wanted to make mention of that, this sheet tells you a lot. And I can tell you from experience, getting those reconciliations done is a challenge. It's a lot of work, and these guys do do a great job, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you so much, Steve.
And Steve, I want to recognize you once again for the great job you did for the time you were here, we really do appreciate that. And thank you for pointing out, once again, that our operating funds still needs some, still have challenges.
Yes.
So, because that's very important to know. And we're gonna continue to work on it, to get them healthier. But again, thank you for all your service, you did a great job. All right. I don't know that we need a motion, do we need a motion to accept the financial statement?
Not the statement.
No.
No, not the statement.
Did we vote to pay the bills already? I believe we did. Okay. All right, let's move on to unfinished business.
This part you have to vote on.
Yes, yes. All right, Judy's throwing me curveballs.
Trying.
All right, let's see. 2022 proposed budget consideration to adopt, and part I of that is a resolution, 2021-2022 tax millage and fees for 2022. Who am I going to, Steve, would you like to?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't wanna put Tom in a...
Nope, that's why I'm here, we...
Yes.
Tom wasn't here when the agenda was built, he gets to take over everything the next meeting.
Yes.
So you have two things to...
He's very excited.
He is, and I've been working with him, I think he's gonna do a fantastic job, I really do. You have two things on your agenda tonight that are related to the budget. One is just a simple motion, we've advertised the budget, we've had it in front of the board at a couple meetings. At the last meeting, we had Mike Aterah here and Kevin, who is here tonight. They were gonna do a brief presentation on the golf course, because the golf course had won an award this year. If you can indulge them to do a real quick presentation on the golf course, that'd be great, you can do it after your motion, or you can do it before. Two things, simple motion to approve the 2022 budget as advertised. Second item, motion to approve the tax rate resolution, which is in line with the budget.
Okay.
Are they separate motions, or we do them together?
Separate.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, let's move first on the proposed budget consideration to adopt, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'll make one comment, I do believe that this is the second year in a row that we did have a balanced budget, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
We had no structural deficit in our budget?
Correct.
That's excellent, that's huge. Huge for the township. And it's, I can't say enough, I know it's difficult, I know there's been some...
It's tight.
Some hard decisions to be made, but by second-class township code, we need to have a balanced budget without structural deficits. So we're still, we're on course.
You're on course.
Okay, thank you.
Just, I want to thank Steve Weisner and all of our staff for putting this budget together. When did the process start, Steve?
Oh, it starts early September.
Early September, so our department head, Steve, and his staff have been working on this for months.
Yeah, everyone did a great job.
It's a good budget, it's a sound budget, it's financially, viscerally stable for the township, I totally agree with that. I just have a little concern with the long-term borrowing that we've done, that we have to take a look before we do that again, because it's built into the debt service, which I understand completely. Other than that, I'm pleased with the budget, but I want to say thank you. I know you guys worked really hard on this.
Great job.
Yep, great job.
Yeah, and our long-term debt's covered right now, we're not raising it, you know, and again, for the second year, I believe, that there's only one, a small tax increase for the public safety for the firefighter side, correct? Yes.
Which I think we're all in harmony with.
Yes, I agree. All right, any other questions or comments, anybody from the audience, the public? No, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries five oh.
Okay, second item is motion to approve the tax rate resolution.
Yes.
For 2022.
Okay, and then we'll get to you.
I'm sorry?
Tax millage and fees.
Tax millage and fees, yes. So do we have a motion to adopt the tax millage and fees?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Judy, any questions or comments? Again, we just talked about it, there's really not much change, except for the additional fire fund. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, being done, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let's see, let's get that presentation in here.
Yep.
You ready, Kevin? Kevin, great to see you.
All right, Kevin rolls.
And then when Kevin's finished, if I can come back just for a brief moment on road paving for 2022, just want to make mention of it in the budget.
Okay, thank you, certainly. Hello, Kevin?
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me here tonight. They asked me to be brief, so 30 to 40 minutes tops.
Let me start the clock right now.
I'm just kidding. So thank you again for having us here tonight. Spirit Golf Management is proud to be partnered with Warminster Township and Running Five Ponds Golf Club. This year, we were honored with a prestigious award, we were the National Golf Course of the Year winner for Pennsylvania.
Yes.
Which was quite an honor, a bit of a surprise at first, but once we saw the criteria, we said it was a no-brainer, we have to be the Golf Course of the Year. So that was a wonderful thing. We were also strongly considered as the National Golf Course of the Year. So I believe we were looked very hard at being the National Golf Course of the Year, which really would have been a feather in our cap, so there's still time for that. A couple of the things mentioned, I think it's important for you, Five Ponds Golf Club is a shining example of how public-private partnerships can result in a profitable and growing enterprise which contributes to the community. We feel like we do all of that. We are proud to be part of this community, we actively engage in the community, and we are trying to be an asset to the community. So we were also honored as the Golf Range Association of America, top 50 public ranges in America, which was our first time. We've been nominated a couple times, that was our first win. And our golf course conditions were rated as good as anyone's around. So for that, a lot of hard work goes into that, and that's where I just want to have this one opportunity to mention Kurt Jensen, our superintendent. He's outstanding, does an amazing job keeping our golf course pristine. And then the rest of the staff, all this is a culmination of hard work by a lot of people. Marley, our food and beverage director, is outstanding, has really been a major role in turning our food and beverage operation in the right direction. And then we have our assistant golf professionals and junior golf leaders, Sean Gensbauer and Garrett Erglevich, who do an amazing job putting together good golf events for all of our residents. So it's been quite an amazing year, I won't bore you with too much, but right now, rounds of golf, as of today, are over 50,000. A five-year trend moving north each year, but the five-year average is down around 43,000, and this year we're over 50,000 rounds. So that's really unbelievable, and a credit to everyone's work. The golf course is still in great condition, considering all those ballmarks and footprint that go through that. Quick numbers, golf revenues are roughly 2.7 million, at a budget of 1.9 million. The driving range is done revenue of 247,000, with a budget of 150,000. Pro shop sales are roughly 174,000, to a budget of 140,000. Lessons in camps, unbelievably, almost 125,000, to a budget of 30,000.
Wow.
We have waiting lists for every event, we're turning kids away, we're trying to keep up with the demand, and we're doing everything we can to keep them involved. Food and beverage, 548,000, to a budget of 376,000, you're looking at it right here. So it's really been quite, quite a wonderful year. It's come with a lot of hard work, I don't think anyone's used to the volume and the daily rigors of this. The weather has also been great, can't take all the credit, but it really has been quite an amazing year, from revenues to managing the expenses, and just working hard on keeping people happy. And what we see most is that people are happy playing our golf course, your golf course, and we are just very, very proud of that, and we're very optimistic. You know, this pandemic, as bad as it's been, has been a punch in the arm for golf. And we know that, and we know it's not gonna last forever, but we're maximizing what we can right now, and we think we're building a lot of goodwill with all of our residents. So long after this bubble kinda goes down a little bit, we'll be in a very good place to service our residents. That's about all I had, I also, if you move forward, I have some pictures, just so you could kinda see what we're doing. These are some junior golf events that you see, just can't get enough, they just can't get enough. Junior golfers everywhere, that's a high school event that we run with over 100 players on the left, and that's a Sunday afternoon junior league golf match that we run Sunday evenings throughout the summer. And like I said, we couldn't have enough. Moving forward, we have some just beautiful pictures of the golf course, which really is, I tell everybody, if you just put really tall oak trees around the perimeter of the property, you would think you were in a private club somewhere. It's really beautiful.
Fantastic.
And then finally, there's a couple pictures of the food and beverage operation, and, you know, kind of the events we're having. Music nights on Friday nights outside, weddings under the tent, events under the tent, you know, bride and groom's coming out for pictures with the scenery of the golf course. Everything has been extremely positive, and Spirit Golf Management is happy to be a part of it.
Great.
All right?
We appreciate everything you do.
I have a couple things, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I have to say that I know, I was a groundskeeper when I was in junior high, I was probably, I was in eighth grade. And I remember how hard it was, this was a private country club, I remember how hard it was to stop the greens from burning up, and keep the fairways green, and it was a difficult endeavor. And I'll tell you, I golfed there in the middle of August, like towards the end of August, when I figured, ah, well, we'll see what it's like, and it was in beautiful shape, I was shocked, you guys do a fantastic job.
Best greens in the area.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, now, fix your ball mark and two others, correct?
100%, absolutely.
Yeah.
Always, leave it better than you found it.
That's right.
I have a couple things, I'd really like to see you bring the nine and dine back. My wife and I did that a few times, it's nine holes, play golf, my wife and put dinner out, it was terrific event, we'd love to see that come back.
We'll have one a month through the season, each with a different theme.
Great.
Oh, nice.
So.
Any couples out there that play golf, believe me, it's really, it's a nice night, you only play nine holes, you have dinner, it's great.
Absolutely, you'll see that.
And I want to give a shout out to Marley, who does a terrific job running the food and beverage.
Yes, she does.
Marley's expecting, and she actually timed it to have the baby in the off-season.
That's right, that's right.
It's the shortest that she'll be back in the spring, before things get busy again.
It's committed.
She did, Mark, I heard that too.
Timed it for the off-season, thank you, Marley, doing a terrific job.
Yeah, great job.
We're lucky to have her.
And I remember...
The baby, too.
Yeah, when the EAC had a couple, well, we had at least one event there, where we invited all the other environmental councils from Bucks County and Montgomery County, we had it, Marty ran it, it was one of the first times that we had a function there, and it was a great success, and I'm hoping that the EAC would reach out to you again and do it again. If next year, I don't know if they did it this year or not. But it does move around from township to township, but I'd love to see that come back, because it was a great event, it promotes our golf course.
And Marley also sets up our fantasy football draft that we have every year, with Commissioner Brian Monroe runs.
Nice.
We didn't make playoffs this year. But thank you, Mark, thank you.
Great, thank you, and I just want to concur with you that working with Steve and John has been outstanding, they've been wonderful to work with, so we're happy as well, and I just want to wish you all a wonderful holiday.
Great, thank you. And I don't see that changing with Tom here, as with any other, you'll have a great working relationship. I am a terrible golfer. Go ahead, Steve, floor's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make mention, the road program, we're working with Craig Kennard's office on that. We have a million dollars in this budget for next year. You'll see an advertisement in the paper sometime in January for the 2022 road program. We're working out the final details right now, Andrew's office is working with Craig's office on the actual roads. Once they're all determined, then we'll be able to advertise that program out for bid. 500,000 in the capital fund, 500,000 in the liquid fuels fund. We may have more money available when we look at how much money is in capital after we finish this year, from the borrowing. And if we're able to expand beyond that million, we will, and we can make a motion to amend that budget next year when we know, it'll be available, what's available in the capital reserve fund.
Okay. Now, I know you're gonna ask about the sidewalks.
No, I'm not, believe it or not, I'm actually gonna ask that, hopefully in January, when this goes out for bid, we can see some type of presentation for the public, so we know what roads are proposed to be paved.
Absolutely, I think we probably can do that.
Yeah, and I think, sorry to jump on.
I'll ask about that in engineers' report.
No, Andrew, you know, when you brought Andrew in, and he worked at Gilmore, I mean, he saved you guys a lot of money, he is doing a lot. He has a plan, he works with Aaron and the rest of my staff, so I think it would be good for him to do a little, and I can be here as well, obviously, and we could tag team him and just do a little presentation like you've done in the past, of which roads. He has it all laid out already, he's, we just haven't finalized and buttoned up, like Steve said, but we're working on the handicap ramps, I was waiting for Mark to ask that.
I know, I was ready to, I was already ahead of him.
I asked that in a month.
I got every list, I got it, yeah, but I promised we'd be working on that, we had money left over from 2021. Steve is aware of that too, we did a really great job on saving some money, and so we continue to work on that. Andrew's got the list ready to go, and we'll start designing over the winter here, and he'll be working on your road program for 2022, for the road part of it, the paving part of it.
Okay, excellent. We've got, as Craig just mentioned, we have three years on the curb ramps for the paving this year. We have 350,000 in the budget for next year. Like I said, if at the end of this year, we determine we have more money available in capital, when the bids finally go out, maybe we can have an alternative to do in excess of that amount. But over three years, we committed to do that, and the plan is in place to do so, for the three years.
Sure beach, 3.5 miles of road a year.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And it's great, because that benefits all the residents.
Sure, sure.
So I'm glad, I'm glad to hear it.
And just ballpark's what I want to talk about later, you're talking about 60 curb ramps will be done in each year, so it'll end up, I guessed around 175, and when they grow around 178 plus or minus, so we're right there, and Andrew has that broken into three, three-year plan, so. And then we'll add on at the end, each year, 2022, 23, if there's a few, we're hitting a lot of them, so we'll add on each year.
It's actually great to hear that we can actually afford to pay for another unfunded mandate. At least we can cover the costs, because they are important, I mean, let's face it. Everyone needs to be able to get up and down curbs, everyone.
Yep.
So, and as my needs continue to deteriorate, it's better, I can't climb up the curb, I can walk up the ramp.
And then the final item I just wanted to make mention is, we're going to do the parade next year, I think the board is committed to that. The line item was not in the budget, simply because we didn't do it for two years, and our lookback period was two years, but just to make mention to the public, we are gonna be doing the parade. We'll find that money in the budget, and we'll do an amendment at the, you know, at the conclusion of that, when we know what all that money is, or what the cost is. Usually approximately about $7,500, not a big item.
Okay.
But just, just so it doesn't get lost.
Yeah, and I think we'll also, Karen, if you need some help, let me know, but I think we should look for some corporate sponsors as well to add some additional funds for the parade. I know one of our managers had spoken to you about that, so I think that's a great idea. I'm sure there's some big companies that would be happy to give us a few hundred bucks, thank you.
I just had a quick comment, I always wanted to let Craig know, and well, all of the staff here. The roads, everybody's saying great things about our roads, they love it. But the ones who haven't had their roads done, they can't wait for your presentation, because they want to know where they're at on the schedule. So people are very interested in what's happening with our roads, thank you.
Yeah, and I think we'll wind up, what do we have, 111 miles of road, township road? And the rate we're going, we'll probably, you know, I'm thinking, I don't know, what do you think, 10 years?
I don't want to spoil anything, Andrew has a plan laid out, so he'll do, I'm sure he'll start it, I'll chime in. I'm not gonna spoil anything, I have a draft here, Tom has to get up to speed.
We'll let him surprise us.
Yeah. So maybe in January, he can do that.
Okay. Excellent. Is that it, Steve?
All right. Thank you very much. And thanks to everyone again. As Mark said, thanks for everyone for doing a great job with the budget and the golf course. All right, where are we? Motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-three, the two thousand twenty-one budget amendment.
Motion.
Yep, that's it.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-four, fund balance commitment. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Judy? All right. Do you, does somebody want to explain that to the public?
Absolutely. Yeah. The, we had talked about for a couple of meetings, the, the need to fund our OPEB liabilities. OPEB are other post-retirement benefits that we're obligated to pay from the township for employees that retire. That has grown to twenty million dollars. And when the plan is done this year, will likely be twenty-two million dollars. Grows annually at a substantial amount. Our pension obligation decreased because we have a trust fund that we're able to invest funds into. And when the markets do well, we're able to reap the reward of that. And it decreases our liability for our pension plans. Our net pension obligation is less than nine million. The OPEB trust is where our challenge is. We need to start addressing that. One way of addressing it, and not the complete and final way, is to start a trust fund where we can invest those funds. But it's multifaceted. We're going to have to look at going forward, contract negotiations to look at those benefits and really look at them hard. That's the other way that we have to approach this. It's multifaceted. We got to get that twenty million dollars down, or it's going to hinder this township's ability to borrow money in the future. Very important. So the board had authorized me to start working on the framework of a trust fund. That will take several months. You can imagine, it's very difficult. We're going to have to do a pen, an ordinance for the OPEB trust. We're going to have to work with a banking institution to create a mechanism where we can push this money to. Once it's there, it can never come back out. It can only be used for OPEB benefits. So the, the resolution that is in front of you tonight is to commit one point five million dollars of your fund balance, which is big. That's a lot of money. But you're doing your part to tackle this twenty million dollar obligation. So you're committing one point five million dollars of your fund balance whence that trust is, is, and it's, has been created, that money will go into the trust as the first deposit. So that shows that, that you're tackling this problem. But we're going to need other help as well. But you're doing your part. And it's big.
Yes.
So.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
And it's been dangling out there for years, I believe. Go ahead, John.
So coming from my past of preparing financial statements, I just want to clarify what a commitment actually means. So when you have fund balance, you have, it's your reserves, what you have sitting aside. There's different categories. There's unassigned, which means you could do anything with it. Assigned, which usually comes to the level of the manager or a finance director saying, hey, we're going to assign it. We want it to go to this purpose. Commitment, that's where you guys step in. You pass a resolution, that money has to be used for it unless you pass another resolution saying, no, we're not going to spend it that way. And then there's restricted, which can only come from outside sources saying you have to spend the money the certain way, which is kind of like the ARPA funds. So I just want to make you, make it very clear that you passing this resolution means if someone, if you wanted to use this money in another way before it actually hits that irrevocable trust, another resolution will have to be passed. So just so everyone knows, like this is a pretty big commitment. That's why it's called committed.
Right. Well, we, we understand the obligation and, and, and I don't believe that we're going to change the commitment.
Yeah.
Because it's.
And it's like when the financial statements will be released after the audit, it will be broken out so that when we do presentations like you did with the budget, we only looked at unassigned. That's what's available for current expenses. So that's why we want to commit it, get it out of there and say, no, let's not look at it again. It's, has a purpose.
Right. And I believe that the, Mark, you were there, and Steve, I know you were there, at the Pension Investment Advisory Committee. We had our, what was the woman's name again? I can't.
Laura Hess.
Laura Hess came in and, and basically hit us over the head again about the OPEB and how this was going to be a problem for, for a lot of different things we were going to try to do. So I, I think it's, my personal opinion is that we should have done this a while ago. And I'm glad to see we're doing something moving forward.
I agree.
Any other questions or comments from the board, from the public? Okay, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. All right. Now, this is a good one. I'm glad to see that this is on the agenda. Motion to approve snowplow removal proposal with mid-Atlantic snow and ice management.
Motion.
Motion. Yeah, I'll, I'll second. I'm just surprised. I'm as surprised as you are. I'm looking over at Windsor. Where'd that come from?
That's our, that's our Public Works Director, working long and hard for that.
Okay, it's not his brother.
Uh-uh. Well, that, well, I haven't.
I'm just guessing.
Yeah, that's a great, that's great. Because we were, we were going to really stretch our resources then if we didn't have some help.
Nice work, Andrew.
It's great. Thank you, Andrew. We'll see you in, in January to thank you in person.
Yes.
And so any other questions or comments from the public? All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed. Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Some really good news in the unfinished business that we could finish some of that. All right, new business. Consider approval of resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-five, appointing the Township Manager, our new Township Manager, Tom Scott, as the Chief Administrative Officer of the Police slash non-uniform pension plans. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board, from the public? All right. Then let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed. Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Consider appointment of the Township Manager as the right-to-know officer for Warminster Township. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments from the public? Okay, being none, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Here comes one for the chief. Consider appointment of Chief of Police as the right-to-know officer for Warminster Township Police Department. Is there a motion? Judy, second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. All right, professional reports. Tom, do you have one or is it Steve?
I, I do have a few comments, but I, I, and some, some thoughts to pass on, but I would defer to Steve for the nuts and bolts and the facts and figures.
Let me go first.
Being as it's, it's yours.
Well, I'll, I'll be brief. I know that all of the reports are in your binders.
Yep.
They're available to the public as well. Because when we have, we do our agenda, we put the, the department head reports out there. They're several, several pages long. We have Susan here from the library, our library director, and we have Karen here from the Park and Rec Department as well, because they want to come and see what's happening at the township as well at these meetings. And so we're thankful to have them. They both are doing a great job in their respective departments. Susan is very new to the township and has really been kind of left on her own out there. And boy, I can't thank you enough because I wish I could have gotten over to the library. But from all that I'm hearing, everything is going great. And I very, very much appreciate it. It, boy, it's, it's, you know, we're truly blessed to have you over there running the show. And, and she's in contact with us whenever there is something happening that we need to assist with and we do our best. But over the next year, we're, we're really thankful. We're going to work closer with, with Susan going forward. And Karen has, of course, been finishing out the park project and also Shenandoah Woods. You know, we have the Shenandoah Woods demolition still ongoing. As we all understand, a demolition project of that magnitude is very complicated. There have been some delays, but the Redevelopment Authority is doing a great job on it and making sure that they're following all of the rules that are, that are out there. And there are many. We're hoping to see all of those buildings down soon, down to the pads. And then what we'll have to do is work on a plan for the rest of the park going forward. John, I don't think we need to go in any more detail. We know all of the work that he's been doing. The chief as well, and Joe Veltin. And we've had a big fire in this township not too long ago. That is a huge undertaking. It was a substantial fire. Joe and the team did a great job in battling that blaze. And, you know, it, if anyone saw it, it was just incredible. So a lot of work goes into, into, into fighting a fire of that magnitude. We're thankful that we don't have too many, but we're, we're also thankful we got a good team to tackle them when we do. So.
Joe, was that, was that sprinkler, that building?
No.
No. Okay. Okay. So was, that building was built long before sprinklers were required?
Yes.
Okay.
And the signs and the day it was built didn't require it.
Yeah. Okay, great. Well, you guys did do a great job securing that area and battling that fire. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Oh, sorry, Tom. I didn't mean to cut you off there. I just.
I, I appreciate the thought.
Steve leaves, then you'll have full attention.
I want to add my voice to the chorus of all the, the, the great impression that Steve has made on everybody here. And it's well deserved. And I've only known him for a few days. But I, I can tell you that the, the township was in very good hands during his stewardship here. And I know that the, the department heads, many of whom are here tonight, enjoyed working with them. And I hope that my relationship with them and my relationship with the board will be at least half as good as, as Steve's. And I, and I, and I think he's leaving everything here on a high note. Although we yanked him back a few times in January, just to keep him honest. So I appreciate the comments and I'm, I'm very happy to be here. Thank you all very much. And I, I've met with the department heads who are here. And we're going to continue to develop that relationship over the, the coming weeks and months. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
I'm sure, I'm sure you'll do an outstanding job. You know, we went through some candidates and we, we were very, very confident that you'll be a great asset to Warminster and welcome aboard.
The only other comments, Chairman, I'll keep it brief, is that back of what, what Steve had said, and what John has said, and what the board has made clear, is that this OPEB is a, an issue that does need to be addressed. And when we think about establishing the trust, establishing that account, putting that one point five million dollars in there, it shows the world. It shows the actuaries. It shows the, the public that this is a serious step. And that in and of itself will help reduce that, that long-term number. Those actuaries will see it as a serious commitment on the part of the, on the Board of Supervisors. And it will help in union negotiations. It will help in bond rating and everything else. It's a tremendous, tremendous start. Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, Mr. Flagler.
We submitted our report. I have nothing further than what I explained earlier. I want to wish everyone a great Christmas, happy, healthy New Year.
Okay, thank you. And.
I'm not like the engineer. I don't pay myself any attention. You're making me look bad. It was my intention.
Mr. Kennard, you're always last but not least.
I know. I have a long list. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Want to welcome Tom. We've already been working together the last couple of days. I think his head's probably spinning on all the land development. There's a lot of projects that are closing out, actually. So unfortunately, we've had some that last over several years and they're finally wrapping up. Couple highlights for your January meeting. I mentioned before, the Lot fifteen Street Road Industrial Park on Nina Way will be in front of you. The Hartsville Court Project over at twelve fifty West Bristol Road. That is a, I updated you last month. That's the old settlement for the Studley property. We have anticipated they'll be in front of the board in, at your January twentieth meeting. But I'm going to guess based on review, they're going to clean up their plans and, and come back. But we'll see. We're almost done with that. So that'll be tentatively scheduled. And then if they're not ready, we'll, we'll pull them off.
Okay.
Couple other projects, smaller projects are starting. Chick-fil-A is open, or starting construction probably in a few weeks on their second drive-through. That's going to be a challenge for them because that existing line is always quite long.
That is.
Nine hundred York Road is a seven-lot subdivision, single-family homes. That was approved back in two thousand seventeen. So there's some of these jobs that sit around for a while. Someone decided to buy that. I think it went through a couple, a couple owners. Yeah, he sold it. So Aaron from my office is out there, walked the site a little bit. They're going to clean up their plans, get the development agreements ready to go. And you will see some construction over there at nine hundred York Road, basically right at the intersection.
Who's developing that? Do you know, Craig? I, I mean, that was sold.
Technically, it's Land Tech.
Land Tech?
Yeah. Yeah. They might be actually building homes, or they may have flipped the lot. So I'm not sure yet. They're.
We granted a three-year extension on the, on their approvals.
Is that the same company that did the Whittier Basin?
Yes. The other big project, Pine Grove Residential Subdivision. I know some residents are curious about, there's supposed to be some field meetings with the developer on stormwater management. They decided to revise the plan again, sketch plan, redo their storm art a little bit based on our comments. And they just resubmitted. We are currently reviewing that. They will then maybe have a staff meeting, go meet with the residents, and then come see you. They agreed not to come in front of this board until they meet with the residents to go over some stormwater management. I like what I see, but it's from a storm art standpoint, but it's still a very dense development. And I'm sure there's going to be some issues with open space and the layout that they'll work out at planning commission, the board. So I don't anticipate the Pine Grove development being in front of you in, in January. I think they're shooting for February or March.
Okay. That's the one over by the cemetery.
Over by the cemetery. It's, there'll be the back half of the site, roughly forty-some homes.
I'm glad to hear that they're working with the residents because I know a few of those residents were out there, meeting and the planning committee.
They haven't yet. That's part of the, I think the calls we've been getting. They decided to revise the plans. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, upcoming meetings. I think the, go ahead. I'll let you go, Tom. All yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The, the Board of Supervisors will hold its annual reorganization meeting on January third, two thousand twenty-two. And we're hoping to establish, or excuse me, to circulate a public notice for the two thousand twenty-two meeting list for the board in the first and third, Thursday of each month. And to add into it, if we could, the, the reorg meeting date for two thousand twenty-three, so that we can take care of that advertisement as well. I am anticipating that, that would be an intelligencer, although being from downtown, I'm not sure of the name.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then so are the next business meeting of the Board of Supervisors is scheduled to be January the twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. All right, second round of the public comment. Anybody? All right, being none, I'll go first here. I want to wish everyone a happy, or a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Be, be safe, stay healthy. And please don't give our police department, please don't make them busy. There's Uber and there's a million other things, ways to go. So I'm sure the chief does not want to be that busy. So thank you. That's all I have. Kathy?
Yes. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Don't drink and drive. Also, would like to wish Mary Owens the very best. We have, really, really going to miss her here on the board. And she's done a phenomenal job. And I wish you the very, very best in the future, Mary, for you and your family. Thank you. I'm willing to miss you. Thank you, Kathy.
All right, Mark.
All right, Mark. And I'll dovetail right on that. I feel the same, Mary. I've really enjoyed working with you, and I'm looking forward to spending some more time with you in North Wildwood. Now we can talk about whatever we want now. But it's been a real pleasure working with you, and I have a feeling I'll see you up here again in the future.
Oh, thank you.
But best, best wishes, and we'll definitely be in touch.
Thank you, Mark.
I want to again welcome Tom. And Karen Whitney, I have to ask you, you've been here how many years? How many managers is this? We had lunch with Karen the other day, and I forgot to mention, we had to, went to the Chamber of Commerce, a holiday luncheon, which was terrific. That Judy Doherty runs a terrific chamber for this Bucks month. I mean, it's just packed with business people that care about doing things in the community. But thanks for involving me in that, Karen. I appreciated it. And the only other thing I have is I want to have the sand hat on. I want to wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year. Let's all get here, back here safely in January. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So Judy, let's go to you, and we'll leave Mary for last.
Okay. Although Mary should never be last. No, I just want to welcome Tom, and I want to say goodbye to Mary, although it's not really goodbye, but...
Never goodbye. It's always see you later.
We're going to miss you. I want to wish everybody happy holidays, whatever your holiday may be. And I want you to remember that there are people that are not happy, having, having happy holidays these days. Remember those that are less fortunate than we are. And be sure and report it if you see someone who's OD'd or who's on drugs that needs to be rescued. And thank you all. This has been a wonderful year. We've come, we've stayed within our budget. We had a good year for the board this year, and I'm happy about that. So thank you all.
So Mary, I think the folks like to hear what you have to say.
That's an inside joke if anybody doesn't know that.
I, I usually distinguish ladies and gentlemen, or, you know, men and women and guys. And I was reminded that the way we say things now are folks. So all encompassing. It was beat into my head by that lovely lady right there.
Got to keep it equal. Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
It's been a pleasure to work with this board for the last two years, and also to represent the residents of the Township of Warminster. Thank you for allowing me to be part of this board, and I trust that the board will continue to do the groundwork that has been laid out by all of us, protecting our assets and keeping a balanced budget like we have done for the last two years. I'd like to thank all the department heads for all of their hard work in helping us attain that. Bill McCauley, Steve, Judy, Mark, Ken, and Kathy, for all of your hard work and all of us working together to make this a great team effort and to proudly represent our township. With that, I'd like to say Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and please stay safe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, so I did not beat my record, as, as some people had asked me to do. I'm sorry, Steve. Couldn't do it this time. I know. Sometimes I, I, I fail at what we tend to do, but any, being all commented, have a great, happy, healthy Christmas and New Year, and motion to adjourn. Don't move, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.